Six thirty and I see that we have a quorum. So I will call a meeting of city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up on our agenda this evening is approval of our consent agenda. Under consent agenda, item one is vouchers totaling two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, forty-six cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions regarding the vouchers? Item two is minutes for our April four, twenty twenty-three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions, corrections to the minutes?
A minor correction, there was in the motion for the ordinance thirteen sixty-seven. I typed thirteen sixty-six, so I will amend those minutes to show the correct ordinance number thirteen sixty-seven.
Any other questions or comments about the consent agenda? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended by city clerk Daniel Bartle. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, we are now into our first public comment opportunity. Uh, do we have, I see we have. Of course, students in the, in, in the audience with us today for extra credit, I'm assuming. Um, and uh. We've got uh. Got Mr. Wilkins back. Welcome. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to our presentation of the twenty twenty-two audit. On the audited financial statements by Adams Brown.
Okay, so I'll start with the letter that should be in the very first part of the bound report. And this is our governor's letter, so it will, it's a letter to let you know we didn't have any difficulties. Um, encountered during the audit or disagreements with management. Um, we also know any internal control issues that we come across during the review of procedures. We do have a couple of recommendations, um, if you turn to page two, this is where the recommendations are listed. Um, the first one is just the payroll liability counts, um, we recommend that they are reviewed each month to make sure that those accounts are closing correctly. And then our other recommendation is. Uh, every month doing a budget to actual report. And a cash summary report to review each of the funds to make sure no funds are going over budget or out of cash. Then if you turn to page three, um, we did have a material weakness. Um, we had missed encumbrances and accounts payable. Uh, there was a total of a hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty, seventy-four, um, encumbrances that were missed at year end. And then we had one accounts payable at sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine that was missed. And then we do still have significant deficiency, um, for proper segregation of duties and has had that in previous years. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the bound copy. And if you turn pages one, two, and three, this will be our independent audits report. And this should look similar to previous year, uh, there was no new standards implemented this year, so the letter should look pretty close to the same. In paragraphs two and three is where the opinion on the financial statements is located at. As in the past, you receive an adverse opinion on gap because you weigh gap each year. And then you receive an un-modified, un-modified opinion on regulatory basis. Since you follow PayMag, and it is the cleanest opinion that you can receive. As for the next few pages, um, it kind of goes through what management's responsibility is versus what auditors responsibility ours and, and it's kind of gives you an idea of what it means to have an audit performed on your financial statements. Hey, now we move to page four. Page four and five, um, this is the financial statements that the opinion is actually issued on. The city pools cash, so it's one collective statement of all funds. At the end of the year, your, your encumbered cash was down two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now we're gonna move to page six. And page six through sixteen will go through accounting policies and footnotes that better kind of explain what make up the financial statements. PayMag did implement under standard this year, they classify operating leases and financing because now and the city does not have such leases, so you will not see that in the footnotes. We did have, um, one violate. We review compliance and we did have one violation this year, and that was in regards to permitting the bond notification within twenty days, um, we get that by the state and they let us know if the city meant that or did not.
What page was that on?
Um, that will be on. To be on page eleven. It's will be no eight, it just says out the violation. Okay, then we're gonna jump to page seventeen. And page seventeen and eighteen, if you're a long-term debt schedule. This year, the city had three new finance leases for a police car, vacuum excavation trailer and a backhoe, so your total debt did decrease thirteen uh, decreased to thirteen million four, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and six dollars with expected payoff year of twenty forty-two. Hey, and we're gonna jump to page nineteen. And page nineteen is your budget to actual expenditure schedule. Um, we do not have any budget violations this year. The remaining several pages, um, after this page nineteen is each fund broken down and it will show you compares prior year to current year as well as budget. I won't go through them all unless you guys have any specific questions about in certain funds. But other than that, that is all I have for you guys, so if you guys have any questions. I know it's a lot at once.
So wanna, um. Kind of following up on that violation with the notification state, I don't know if everybody understands kind of how that works, but when you have a bond payment with the state of Kansas, they require you to notify them within twenty days, uh, prior to the to the payment of that notice that you're intending to pay it essentially, um, so we, we did in fact pay it, we just didn't give them the notification in the um, so it's not like we failed to pay our bond payments or anything like that, but we we just didn't hit that notification.
Pretty thinking about exact timing and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they usually let us know if violation or not.
Yeah.
We talked through that a little bit as Delaney and Danielle Hancha uh, went through that with us and it was my understanding we needed to notify them within the twenty days, but now I realize a payment needs to be received at the state. Twenty days in advance, is that right, I believe? So, we've made note to correct that going forward.
So your due date with the state is not actually listed on the bond.
So that's.
Twenty days before that, so that's how they. Yeah, well, and it's, it's a state law and I, I get why they do that to make sure that the bond gets paid, that's, you know, it's an insurance to the to the bondholders as you do in fact, it's their money, um. Now, whether or not you're gonna be able to pay your bonds with twenty days difference, I don't know if you're gonna, what you're gonna do to do that, but. Um, yeah.
So the, uh. The, uh, recommendations on the, uh. Payroll liability counts and, uh. And, uh. We, that's all clear and as to what needs to happen going forward. And then the, uh, budget to actual, I mean, I know we're getting, uh, fun. The, you're giving us financial reporting.
So that, what the difference is, um, and please let me know if I'm not explaining this right, is that the reports that I'm giving you do not include the purchase orders that have been approved, so essentially any encumbrances from month to month are not included in those monthly financials. And so we've talked with Adams Brown about the best way to include those, likely it's just going to be a spreadsheet, but so it will change into from what it, what it is to include those encumbrances. Um, and the payroll liabilities is, we think is setup issue on the front end with payroll, we're going to dig in with the software provider and see what we need to do so that that's corrected.
So in terms of, of, uh, maybe you're in your communication with staff, you're comfortable that they understand your, the things you've raised and the, in the recommendations you've made and.
Yes, and Danielle has done a great job about responding to us and really working us there and sent down with us, so she knew that, make sure she understood of kind of what we were, um, recommending and everything with that, so we didn't have any problems. She was great in helping us out.
So there was no material findings, no, no?
We just had those, the material weaknesses, just encumbrances, and that has to do with it's approved by board. Um, it does have to be on the books for the year it was approved. And then, um, in AP, but it was just one single AP that was missed and it had to do with utility, um. Kind of the dates of utilities.
Can you, any other questions, comments?
No, I feel like this is a. When, when we, when Danielle took over city clerk, I felt like it was probably gonna be a, uh, multi-year process to kind of get things formed into the way we like to do it and simplify things, we've, we've taken a tremendous amount of funds off the books and kind of rearrange things, so I feel like this is kind of year two of a three-year kind of process, uh, and I think that we're moving in the right direction on everything and, and you know. We're getting our hands on how some of those things need to operate.
Well, I, obviously I'm speaking for myself, but as mayor, I'm very, uh, very pleased with the, with the way things are progressing and very, uh, pleased with, uh, with your performance and your staff Danielle and and, uh, you know, I agree with Matt that these are these are issues that are just part of a learning process that we're going through. You know, sometimes things change too and, and, uh, you know, and the, as we go along, other, the state and other people, you know, change things. You know, you gotta make sure to keep up, but you know, with having a, a good audit firm that's very familiar with us and and, uh, and, uh, you know, keeping our eyes on it, uh, I feel good about it, so. Well done, thank you.
Good, if you guys have any questions later on, you can send them on to Danielle, we can help get those answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we are now ready for a public hearing for ordinance thirteen sixty-six regarding dog confinement and we will move into that hearing. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak, uh, towards, uh, ordinance thirteen sixty-six? Anybody online, anybody in the room? Okay, well, I hear no public comment, no one here, uh, to, to address this issue, so we will close the public hearing. And we will move on to our business items. And the first item is consideration of ordinance thirteen sixty-six regarding dog confinement, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, so this, this hasn't changed anything, uh, any since we reviewed it last time, we've kind of taken a slow approach with this, cause to any, any relation, any issue with dogs typically, uh. Get some attention, I think we've had pretty, pretty good coverage in the media as far as what that looks like and I'm, I'm happy if there's no comment on it in the public that uh, that must mean that it's at least, uh, not, not the worst thing on earth, so. Um, we're recommending move forward with adopting ordinance three thirteen sixty-six on dog confinement as it was written.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve ordinance thirteen sixty-six regarding dog confinement.
So moved.
Okay. Councilman Driggers moves that, councilman by seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none will poll the council, councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirteen sixty-six is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Uh, we are now going to, uh, item two, which is consideration of a revised quote from Johnson Service Company for sewer lining totaling two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so we approved this back in, uh, beginning of February. Uh, Johnson's has been out and done the cleaning and kind of tried to pull a picture up so you can look at it a little better. Um, so what we did was we did the cleaning over here on this section town, which is kind of what we call phase one. Uh, we came over and did, uh, phase two and, and as we were going through and doing a lot of the cleaning, we turns out some of these were already lined, uh, which was, it was a good thing, it's kind of a happy surprise, but uh, we didn't have that on any of our maps, um. So what we were able to do is kind of pivot and move them over into one of the areas we had labeled as, uh, three, phase three, which is a section of D Street down here, uh, as it turns out, this is in pretty rough shape. Uh, not, not the greatest shape in the world, uh, which, so it needs to be re-lined. Um, and what we did was we went back and talked with Johnson and company or Johnson Services, excuse me. Uh, we improved the cost up to two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, three-twenty-six. Um, for, for the lining part of the project, uh, and they were able to come back in after we had done the cleaning. Um, and the sewer department Caleb Spencer who's here to represent the sewer department, I think Morgan's online too, but, um. They were able to negotiate with Johnson and get the square foot or the per foot price down. So what we were able to do is add one thousand and ninety linear feet, which would be floral to ash, uh, on D Street, that line there. Um, and the, the change in cost from going from, uh, thirty, thirty-nine, uh, thirty-nine dollars per foot to thirty-five dollars per foot, when we were able to kind of maneuver that a little bit, uh, we were able to get for an extra ten thousand dollars and an additional almost thousand feet of, of lining, so. Um, and I, I would defer to Caleb if you have any, any comments on that or any questions specific or comments specific to that, Caleb.
That's what they shortened some of the runs down to ones that we didn't need. Um, so like on Birch Street, there's a stretch that they didn't need to do and there's a stretch on Ash that they didn't need to do, which helped us a lot. Um, and then they also came through with instead of doing each individual run per manhole, they put some together so they could shoot it all as one and then reopen it up in the manhole and that is what got the cost down per foot.
So have you been pleased with their work?
Oh, yeah, they've been amazing to work with. They're always there, if they have questions, they're more, more than willing to answer. Um, there was a event that we had on, uh, North Birch, the Hundred Block North Birch that suddenly popped up and they're right there to help us the whole time, so. They've been really easy to get along with.
So. Any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to, uh, accept the revised quote from Johnson Service Company for sewer lining totaling two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars. Councilman by moves, is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, item three, consideration of a purchase of a chlorine dioxide generator from DNF Services LLC, Mr. Styles.
So we kind of talked about this at the last meeting, uh, we had gotten approval from KDHE through our forgivable loan, uh, to do sole source purchasing to get this chlorine, chlorine dioxide unit, um, in place before the summer came. Uh, so we have that and we had DNF, uh, services provide all the all the necessary documentation, uh, in order to, for them to be qualified from KDHE, which includes the Build America by America Act funding. Um, so we can prove that this was built in, in Overland Park and, um, has parts from Kansas, mostly from Kansas, actually, so works out pretty good. Um, so what we would do is we want to, we're asking for approval of this purchase for the chlorine dioxide generator, um, at fifty-eight thousand, seven fifty. Uh, the pro, uh, the the money for this will come from the, uh, proceeds from the forgivable loan. We'll, we'll actually pay for it first before that gets processed. Yeah, we're gonna get reimbursed for it through the, it's, it's a, a, a included expense through that KDHE loan, so. Um, yeah, we're just looking to, to get that moving and they said, I think, what, what was the ETA on that, Caleb, do you remember?
I do not remember.
Okay, I think they were talking a matter of weeks, a couple of weeks, so.
Right before.
Yeah, we were able to get it in before it becomes an issue, summer hopefully, hopefully. It's an easy summer, but we'll see, um, so we're, we're, we are making recommendation for approval of purchase today.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to exit or to approve the purchase of a chlorine dioxide generator from DNF Services LLC in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So if this generator does not work.
Hmm.
Do we still get your name, K H? Okay.
Yeah.
I second that.
All right. Motion by Councilman McCarty, second by Councilman By. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Sure.
I'm very.
Okay, good, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Yeah, I get it. Item four, lease purchase agreement with Central National Bank for the purchase of equipment, Mr. Styles sent out an email earlier.
Said that, yeah.
With the updated information.
That updated information here, so what we need to do, uh, this is the equipment lease through C and B for the purchase of the, uh, trash truck and then for the bin track mower and deck, uh, we've had to split these two things up. Originally, we were talking about including the new fire truck that was coming in. Still has not arrived, uh, we've been told it's been built in Texas somewhere, but haven't seen it, so. Uh, we're moving that on and then the dump truck also and the sprayer, so those are gonna end up being a package deal on something else for the compliance. Um, so this is a, um, sixty-year note or sixty-year, sixty-month note with CMB at, uh, Central National Bank for five point five-three percent. Uh, there's no pre-penalty for prepayment, probably will actually pay this one off earlier, um, the way it's structured, so. Uh, we've got the documents that you, we sent out today, apologize on it being late, we were trying to make some adjustments to it at the end. Um, what you're really considering though is authorizing, um, our adopted ordinance thirteen sixty-eight, which will uh, approve the agreement and authorize all the signatures necessary to do that, so. Do you have anything to add to that?
I don't think so, but if there's any questions, happy to answer.
So what was the ordinance number again?
Uh, it's thirteen sixty-eight.
Any questions? All right, hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen sixty-eight for lease purchase agreement with Central National Bank for the purchase of said equipment.
Make that motion.
Hey, councilman, by moves, is there a second?
Sorry.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh. We will poll the council, councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman Briggers.
Yes.
A ordinance thirteen sixty-eight is hereby adopted and we will necessary signatures.
There's a lot, so.
Yeah. Okay. Um, we are now into our discussion section of our meeting and the first item in there is, uh, meeting room rental policy, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so we've had a policy in place on our meeting rooms for several years, actually over ten, we, we, well, longer than that, we, we had, uh, an original policy that had been revised six times. Um, and so we said, well, you know, we probably need to just rewrite the whole policy. Uh, we've added the golf course clubhouse, which we now have access to, um, so we wanted to add that in here too. So what we did was basically take some of the, some of the things in there and, and revise those so we can have a, a different kind of clean clean slate when we do, um, room rentals. Um, so what we did, we kept everything roughly the same, uh, as far as who, who gets to use these facilities rent-free. Uh, we still ask for a deposit for everybody, but if you're a non-for-profit organization that's doing something specifically for, uh, for the community, better make of the community, we have civic groups like Kiwanis Meets Here, Lions Club Meets Here. Uh, we won't charge them rental fees, we do ask for deposits if they're gonna do things. Uh, we do allow churches to do that too, as long as they're not having ongoing services and building that creates issues, uh, if you continue to do that. Um. Community-wide events, we said that you can use that arts and crafts, use this building, for example, during the Arts and Crafts Festival, uh, and that's probably gonna change this year too. It sounds like that maybe they're gonna be, um. Hosting kind of their events out of here, uh, the actual arts and crafts committee. And so the coffee house that's normally here may get moved over to the community plaza. Um. See how that goes, but you know, we want to make sure that those things are, are kind of noted too, that if there's things there, we can, um, make exceptions for them if something unique comes up that we're better for community events. Uh, we did change the rental rates to before in this building and these, these rooms in here, these you know, you could rent one, one of the rooms, and then there was a whole thing about, do you have access to the kitchen, where you have to pay for access to the kitchen, we just said no, we're just gonna simplify all that. It's gonna be one rental rate, fifty dollars gets you the whole thing. Um, and then there's a thirty-dollar deposit, that is a little bit of an increase, but it's fairly consistent with what we found for rentals. Um, still honestly fairly cheap, uh, for rental for a whole day. Uh, the scout house we put in that for seventy-five and a fifty-dollar refundable, uh, deposit, that's a little bit of an increase on that too, um. Just felt like it was probably time hadn't been changed in, I think, almost ten years, so. Uh, probably okay with that, and then we added the golf clubhouse, which is at seventy-five with a fifty-dollar deposit. Um. Some things, you know, we break down sort of the rules with everything, one thing I would note is that um, we did take the scout house fireplace off, we feel like that's a really big hazard to let people use that. We've had some issues in the past with people who don't necessarily know how to use a fireplace, wanting to, so we took that out of there. Uh, and then there's also some, one of the things with alcoholic beverages with city hall and the scout house, those are prohibited. Uh, but the golf clubhouse is always allowed alcohol, so we we just left it in there as you can have alcohol out there, you take responsibility for it, though, we're not having any responsibility with that. Um, so tho- those are kind of the main highlights there with that, uh, it will re, um. Take the place of the, uh, policy that we had existing, which was from April of two thousand and ten, so. Um, that was the last revision of that one, so. If, if you're interested in that, if you want to talk about more, uh, we're just here to have a discussion, kind of get your feedback on it, there are a few changes, but nothing, nothing too wild.
Any questions? Uh, I would have a question to Andrew regarding the alcohol piece. Uh, even if we say it in our policy that we're not responsible, is that sufficient to be not responsible?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Boisterous activities is a very good.
Boisterous activities, I thought was, that's original, that's not our invention, that's original. No wow and crazy parties, that's.
Have we had, uh? Have we had any issues of wait with, with renting our facilities, uh? That, uh, that brought this up or, you know, has there been any problems that, that that have been?
No, the biggest, the biggest problem is probably scheduling, sometimes you run into situations where you know, somebody maybe wants this room, but got another party that's not necessarily not necessarily compatible in the other room, and so and then it's an argument about the kitchen space and how that works.
So we do not have this available to sign up online.
Not at this point, no.
Is that something we might consider for the future? Just have a calendar that people can go online and see if the rooms are open and, and also make their down, make their payment, you know, for their deposit.
I think it's, I think it's possible with their website that the deposit part might be tricky, but I didn't know, we could run that through the rec. Oh, we, we could run it through rec, that's a good question, I think we could add some of that capability. That would be helpful, honestly, cause we do get a lot of, we have calendars on the wall, that's how we keep track of them, so. There's a better way, we're more than happy to look at.
Oh, again, you know, we've just really done a good job of, of, uh, automating our systems and you know, anytime we can automate it and take out some human intervention. You know, I think probably it'd be a, be a good thing.
Yeah, I would agree. Very.
Is this something the council wants to defer action on, or is this something you're ready to take action on this evening? You ready?
Okay, if you needed like an official.
Well, we'll, we'll do a motion to approve, uh, policy number one hundred.
Okay.
So if somebody would make a motion to approve policy one hundred, we can, uh, we can move forward.
I'll do that.
Hey, councilman McCarty. Councilman by seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, uh, moving on is, uh, our neighborhood revitalization plan, Mr. Styles.
See, this is one of those tools and kind of talk a little bit about it when we get into the housing piece of our strategic plan, but uh, it's one of those tools that we could be using a little bit differently, uh, right now Marion County has, uh, neighborhood revitalization plan that affects the entire county. Um, but one, one of the room, the rumblings we've heard is that they may be interested in getting rid of that, um. And so i- it might be time for us to consider doing a Hillsborough, Hillsborough-based plan, uh, the county would still, we still want the county to be a participant, they're the largest taxing entity in the county. Um, but you know, we maybe have to have some conversation with them, there's a lot of conversation that has to happen, if you're gonna do this, you have to have inter-local agreements with all the parties involved, which would be primarily just the school district and county for us, but, um. So neighborhood revitalization is a rebate program, uh, it pays. You pay your taxes and normally you get a rebate back based on the percentage of improvement that you make to a property, so it works really well for rehabilitation, that's actually why it was invented, um, you know, more or less. So it works really well for rehabilitation, that's actually why it was invented, um, you know, more or less for, for redevelopment, infill kind of development stuff. Where it kind of has taken a more controversial turn is where people use it to do new housing on greenfield developments. Um, sometimes, sometimes that that's not the intention of it necessarily, but that is how it's been put into practice. Um, and so, you know, it, it would be a situation where we may have to navigate some of those waters, too. But what, what, you know, it's for blighted areas or for economically disadvantaged areas and, and sometimes people have a hard time making the argument that an area is blighted or disadvantaged, because who wants to live in a blighted community? You know, I, I think you could make the argument that we're economically disadvantaged because we haven't had a new home start in several years. So there's, there's maybe a, a case to be made for that, and of course you can apply it however you wanted to. If you wanted to do a more targeted plan, you could do that. I would probably advocate just doing the corporate city limits of the city of Hillsborough so that you don't run into situations where this house isn't in there or this one is. There's lots of different ways to structure this thing, the state law allows you to go up to ten years at a hundred percent. I don't think that's a great idea at all. I think you should probably look at doing some kind of stair step thing. Um, I've given you kind of the list of how the county does theirs now, it's a five-year plan, it starts at ninety percent and goes down to fifty. You know, there, there, I put a couple of options in there, kind of what we've seen. I had uh Alejandro, our intern, do some research on this, had him pull together quite a few options. Um, so you can kind of see what that could look like. Uh, I think it's important to think about all the, the taxing entities involved, the, the county here has almost seventy-five mils uh compared to the city's forty-three. And the, and the school district has sixty-one, but they can only, they can only participate as far as their local options. So there's twenty mils that always goes to the state that they can't, they can't do anything with. Um, so you know, if we're, if we're wanting to look at this, we'd have to pursue these new interlocal agreements, there's a lot of legwork that needs to be done, but uh, I think that. At least the argument I would make with it is if, if we're interested in doing this, it could be a really powerful tool if we can extend it out and make it a little bit more rich. Um, you know, right now, as I, as I said, we haven't had any new housing starts in several years. Uh, this could potentially be something that could help generate that, or at least be a part of a package that would generate that. We've already done some things with adding uh waiving of fees and connection things uh as part of our, our efforts to help spur new housing. Um, you know, I, the argument everybody always makes, or at least I've heard, is that, you know, you're giving up property tax, but. Fact of the matter is, even if it's ten years, a house that you build, we've got houses here that have been here a hundred years and have been paying taxes for a hundred years, so. Uh, you're, you're getting a hundred percent of nothing if you have no development, so. The idea is that maybe, maybe it's something that we could deploy here and maybe if you wanna be more strategic with it, that's great. But um, I think if, if we're interested in this and the county has thought about getting rid of it, knowing the timeline that it takes to do this, if we're interested, we probably ought to start now. Um, so I wanted to put that out there as an option and, you know, it's one of the things we've talked about in our strategic plan, so. I wanted to put it out there for you to, to, to talk about and see if there's something else we need to think about or what issues you see with it and kind of how you wanna proceed.
Well, it's the reasoning for the county wanting to get rid of it.
I think there's some resistance to the, uh, you know, just the idea of providing some kind of incentive, and there may be some, in, in, in kind of how I understand it, there may be some resistance since you're being countywide, too. That is not, that is not how it was originally conceived. That was not how, that is how it's been used uh widely and a lot of times in, in rural areas, that's how it gets used, but. There are some people who are pretty adamant that that's not how it should be used.
Would, based on that, if the county is wanting to get rid of, do you think we'll have trouble with the interlocal agreement? You don't know.
I have no idea at this point. They may be more favorable to something more targeted.
Mm-hmm.
That's one of their things.
Oh, I'd be favorable to something more targeted, so we're not, so at least we know we have a purpose of what we're attacking. You say improvements to a property, like, is that even just remodels and stuff? Or uh, so it's everything from remodel to full-in rebuilds and?
Yep, yeah, as long as it increases the taxable value, so. Uh, things like roofs, uh, HVAC, don't typically do that, but.
You're doing any kind of addition or something that would do that?
Yeah, it would.
How would that play in with like the planning commission and all that? Would they have to review all of that stuff or?
Uh, the planning commission doesn't have a real specific role in this, you could designate them to do some of that work if you want.
I didn't know how. When Larry was here, didn't people use that once in a while years ago, if I remember right?
People use it now, uh, the existing plan, it, it's just a little bit, it's less generous than it could be. Um, and so it's not as, it's not one of those incentives that we lead out with and say, yeah, you could do this, get. Uh, and the way the county's is structured, it also has um, for agricultural development and for commercial development, too. Um, and I think those are perfectly fine the way they are, I wouldn't recommend going any more aggressive with those, but housing may be one that we could do that, given that we don't really have a lot of momentum on housing at this point.
Is there one of the two options that you look at more?
Just depends on how, how aggressive you'd like to be with that. Um. You know, from our perspective, we, we, when we build a house in here, you know, we've gained residents, which is great. School district gains students most hypothetically, um, most time depending on who built. Uh, we gain utility customers, gain people who are gonna contribute to the sales tax base, so I, you know, the property tax isn't, isn't the, the big, the big thing for us, so. Um, you know, I, I would be in favor of doing something fairly aggressive. Um, and I think one of the things you should also consider is being maybe more aggressive on the rehabilitation side. Uh, we have a lot of property that could use some help on the rehabilitation side. Uh, and so if we give a tool that's more geared or more favorable for that, you may get more opportunity for that type of development, so. Someone's gonna rehab a house and one of the infill areas of town, make that a little bit more generous, saying, you know, we're gonna do more with that.
So it sounds to me like you might have, might wanna develop a little more comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I, i- if this is something you wanna, I, I just wanna see if there's something you wanna start with, right? Because if we're gonna do this, we're gonna have to have some idea of what we wanna do when we go talk to the county and the school district. And they're gonna have some say in this, too, if they want it to be less or, you know, we're having to deal with not one, but three governing bodies, um. So it's, it's something we would wanna form up, but if it's something you wanna do, let's start now, it's kind of.
Is it something that it would be better to have a plan in effect in case the county does decide to go away with it?
Yeah, I think you wanna have something in place, it's, it's a, it's a good tool, even if, even if you just replicate it with the county had now, it'd still be a good tool.
I guess not a bad idea.
I don't wanna see it go away, um, if that is the case, and I, I don't know if that's pending, I know they've talked about it. Instead of getting five commissioners and started doing strategic planning, but. Who knows how imminent that actually is?
I like the idea of doing something like that, I probably would lean maybe more towards option two than option one. Just that gradual.
Little bit, yeah.
Gradual comeback in, I mean, I think you, you could do ten percent on both the last, but trailing two years or something, but. The uh. I don't, I, it strikes me as it might, I don't think option one would be that much, would make it push it to the too much different than option two.
Right. Yeah, at the end of the day, it's front-loaded.
Right.
And so most people are gonna see that.
Right, see this first.
They're gonna get excited about those first couple of years. Kind of goes down from there.
So do we just, uh, are we just giving direction or do we need a motion to uh, to direct him to pursue option two? And uh, and put it together and then at some point, we're gonna have to have some kind of working group with the school district and the county, you know, that, that we would need to, need to put together.
There's a, there's a lot of process ahead of you on this, um, the, so. I think just some basic direction that, yeah, go ahead and put a plan together and then we'll bring it back to the council, you're right, at a certain point. We'll have to start the discussions with the county and the school district to see what they will participate in if we want their portions of the, of the taxes to be included uh within that plan. And the other thing that I'll say based on this discussion is, um, we will have to figure out what portions of the city we wanna include, because the A G has now put down a bright line that says you can't just put the whole city or the whole county, even the, the county's old one, um, that, that's, that's not permitted anymore. So we will have to make some decisions about what, what areas qualify and what don't, so just give you a heads up on that as it were for.
Can you do that almost based on age of the homes that are there?
You do it on the, well, you do it on the factors of, of what's considered blighted under the statute. But that's solely within the council's discretion, I mean, there's no, you know, there's guidance as to what that means, but if you say, yes, this area beats that, there's, there's not much of a challenge to it, right?
Hey, so is the council comfortable with that direction for the city administrator? Thank you. It looks like you got your mark, word, marching orders.
It's process, for sure.
Yep.
Hey, next item up is for discussion is our Q one strategic plan update, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we've got uh, a lot, a lot of stuff going on, there's a lot of stuff going on. Um, the ones where, the places where we've probably made the most progress are his childcare. Um, you know, we, we actually, we formally, we did a signing of the deed over to the, uh, from the church to the, the childcare group. Uh, there's, there's still some stuff that has to happen with that, it's not everything is official and technical, it's more ceremonial. Um, but we, you know, that, that group has assumed some of the data, control that building, got it insured, changed utilities over that kind of thing. Uh, we see grants from the Childcare Ware and Patterson Foundation, there's some private donations of over a hundred thousand that are pledged out there. Uh, there's also the C D B G, which is gonna be going in on May first. Uh, and there's also a childcare accelerator grant that the, the Kansas Department of Commerce is going in, we're going for that, too. Uh, and then we're also looking at the Community Development Tax Credit Program, there's a lot of funding sources kind of coming into this at once. And, and we know there's a, a pretty significant private donation hanging out there that's a match, so. Uh, you know, from a financial standpoint, it's doing really well, I think we're actually being in a position where we could actually start construction probably in the next six months. Uh, well, I say that, we're gonna start the drawing and kind of getting all that formally done and then move into the construction piece, so. Uh, if you wanna check out the fundraising total, it's on there on Dale's grocery store, yeah? Uh, hoping to make some, some marks on that, to get that kind of moving forward. Lot of great progress with that, pretty happy with how that's gone, been moving with them all, every step of the way on that. I feel pretty comfortable saying that that one's gonna go forward, we're gonna have a solution to that. If we look at housing, we're, we're kind of moving forward on some of that, too. Um, we've got some, some things heading over by the elementary school that got delayed, uh, there's some negotiation happening between landowner and the, the development group, and they didn't get to the deadline in time, but I think they're kind of gearing up to do that again, it's pretty clear.
We just gotta make sure we're on top of that, so we don't let it get past us again.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, we're trying to get, trying to get those two to talk together, we're really, we're trying to play matchmaker a little bit. But yeah, we're, we're gonna remember that one, um, and then we'll have a, we're actually gonna submit to the K, uh, Casey's ends housing resource commission for a, a program similar to kind of what Marion did with down payment assistance, too, so. We're having that, um, our shipping container houses, we, we thought those were kind of abandoned, but maybe they've resurfaced again, so there may be some life with those still. I don't know, we'll see. Um, they still haven't done all the stuff for the overlay district, so there's a little bit of process there yet.
But we've got that in place so that we don't have to worry about, you know, somebody circumventing.
It is all there, it's, it's, we're gonna follow the book on anything that's non-traditional, so. Um, to talk to somebody about uh, no, redeveloping the old hospital, um, we actually showed it to somebody uh last week. So we'll see kind of how that goes, um, biggest thing there is cost redevelopment, I don't know what that would end up actually looking like or how long it would take. Um, we could get them the property relatively quickly, but how long it would take to do something with, I don't know. Uh, they're still kind of talking about that. Uh, we did talk about the neighborhood revitalization plans, we're gonna continue forward with that. Uh, we have our housing needs assessment, which is going to be for the rural housing incentive district, uh, Wichita State's doing that process for us, we actually have our first um, focus group tomorrow. Uh, they're also doing some personal interviews and a couple of other focus groups, so. Got that moving forward and should have that completed next month, uh, that piece. So, you know, while we don't have any new homes in the ground, we've got a lot of momentum kind of things getting put together, so. Feel pretty decent about that one, I wish we had more going, I have talked to a lot of people who are interested in building homes lately, which is, is a good thing, it's a little bit different, so. Uh, I feel pretty, pretty happy that we're moving a little bit there. Um, on the workforce side, Butler Community College has informally bowed out of our trade school discussions. And we, we moved on to talking more again with H C C, Hutch Community College. Uh, there's also some federal funding out there right now that could be written to support this project, and so we're trying to find, i- i- getting a community college to commit to anything has been a real interesting challenge, I didn't think it was gonna be that way, but um, they're pretty squirrely about saying, yes, we're definitely gonna do this. Um, so we may just have to go it alone on that, I don't know if we can or not, but. Um, we certainly wanna have a partner with that and have a place that's, they can matriculate to, people could go to and get it some kind of certification, but. Um, it may be something that we have to start and then have them come in for, for that work.
Is this something we could uh utilize uh the entrepreneurship center as, as, as part of? You know, uh, it seems like, you know, somebody's gonna have to take the bull by the horns, and you know, if, if we can't get others to do it, you know, I just feel really strongly that, that we need to, we need to push forward on this. I mean, if we wanna see tradespeople, you know, in Hillsborough, I mean, in rural communities, you know. I actually participated in an interview with a journalist at Lawrence today, talking about uh the lack of legal services in, in rural areas. But you know, that conversation led to a, a broader conversation about any professional services in rural areas, you know, and it, and it, you know, and the question was asked to me, well, you know, how, what are you gonna do about it? What do, what do you do? And uh, you know, my response is, as always, is to have a bias for action and, uh, you know, take action this day whenever we can, right? And I know that puts pressure on, uh, that stresses our organization a little bit, but uh, you know, we have to be thinking long-term. And uh, I think it's just vitally important, so. I, I really wanna, you know, and, and I would encourage the council, you know, wherever you think you might be able to plug into that, that initiative or that effort, I would appreciate, you know, any help you have, I know we have uh, uh, people in industry, uh, people, uh, people that are, that are close to their, their educational, you know, time and, and we also have people that, you know, helped with continuing at organizations in Hillsborough, you know, in the past as well. So uh, you know, we've got, uh, we've got uh, uh, resources that not just, it's not just, hey, city administrator, you know, do this, you know, so, and if we need to, you know, put a committee together, much like the H four C group, then maybe that's a direction we need to start, and, because I know that we have people in the, in our trade suppliers in town that, uh, you know, they brought this up in the first place, and I think, you know, maybe it's time to engage them and then a little more actively, formally.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, yep. Get moving on some more of that, hopefully find some, some good partner, I know there are a lot of partners, uh, we fatted them at this table before, so hopefully we can move them, move in the right direction. Uh, Center for Entrepreneurships continue to, to work pretty, pretty well, I think they're, they're kind of getting their legs under them, they're, they're doing a lot more workshops and they hosted a pitch competition uh recently, had some, some really interesting things come out of that. Uh, I think they're, they're still trying to establish themselves and figure themselves out a little bit, um, but I think it's still moving in the right direction, I'm pretty pleased with that partnership, I think that. You know, we'll have that conversation at the, in the summer about what we do with next year and, you know, I think, I think we're in a position where we probably ought to think about continuing that partnership, so. Uh, community development stuff, so community developed the plaza, as you can see, we, we finished the, the, the pouring of the pad for the actual spray park and uh, we're, right now, we've got the hole open, we're gonna connect the sewers, do the final connections on it tomorrow. Uh, pouring some more sidewalk Friday and we've got some auxiliary stuff, you know, the patio area, the shade, the shade shelters. Um, gotta put grass down, or sod, I think we're gonna go for sod. So there's, there's a lot of little things yet to be done, but the pad itself is, is finished and will hopefully be. So there's, there's a lot of little things yet to be done, but the pad itself is is finished and will hopefully be able to get that going and and actually test that out here soon. So probably spraying some water a couple of weeks. It should be fun.
Yeah, whenever.
You lucked out. It taken all the way to.
Yeah, it's.
I know, but you know, we do have, uh uh we do have a, or the mayor has a little bit of a line in the sand that he's trying to hold to, and that's having this open for the same day as our pool opens.
Yep, that's what, yeah.
I think we'll be there. We're, we're it still looks like a kind of a mess, but we're closer than than it appears, I think. So. Um so that's the community plaza. We'll get that one marked off the list this summer. I think everybody will be.
Well, phase one.
Phase one, yeah, we'll have phase two coming up. We'll take a, a deep breath and enjoy phase one for a little bit and then we'll get going on fundraising for phase two. Um, community marketing plan, we we're gonna test, we're not really doing the full thing. We're doing a little bit of test uh run with some other messaging and branding stuff, kind of some smaller stuff. Uh we're gonna be doing some things specifically for the golf course um and and some other of our museum stuff, and we're gonna try a little bit of smaller things before we jump in into this massive marketing campaign. But it, you know, we're moving forward on that. It's a little bit more incremental than I thought originally we're gonna do with that.
If I could, just one comment. I've gotten several positive comments about our notorious exhibit and about our museum director and people from out of town that if, that I've interacted with that went through that and they were just couldn't have been more complimentary of the uh the the tour and the exhibit and then the, and the, and the in in the friendliness of of our museum staff. So.
Excellent. Happy to hear that. And Carol will be here May second uh to do her annual report on the museum. So you'll have an opportunity to get some more in-depth information about that. Yeah, that that notorious thing's gone pretty well and pretty happy with that.
How long is that?
Uh end of the month, twenty eighth, I think is what it's last day. Uh Parks and Recreation Trail System Plan, we've got that, gonna be included in the C I P. I talked with Darren about the C I P yesterday. Uh he told me it'll be done this week. We'll see if it'll be done this week. So, yeah, we've been riding them on that, trying to get that moving. Uh they've got most of the big stuff done, like they did the streets already. We've seen that part. Water sewer, uh there were some things they needed to tie up there. Rec and the other parts, I've got some pieces to plug into that, but should have that here for you pretty quick. We need to get that adopted. Ran a little bit of trouble with the audit. We've got it set up in our, the way our system is set up is that the C I P has to be a budgeted fund and typically that's not the case. Um it doesn't have to be in the state of Kansas. Um so we may have to make some adjustments and we need to approve a new C I P. We've had, we have one technically approved, but it's so that it's irrelevant. So uh we'll have this new C I P, then we can, you know, talk about how we adjust some of those things budget wise too. So uh fifth grade garden club's getting going again. So they've started, they actually done some planting already. Pretty excited about that. Got about a dozen students and families signed on for the growing season. So they'll, we'll see them continue through summer too, which is great. Um so moving, moving forward on that too, hoping to keep that moving and looks, looks to be doing pretty well. Um financial stability goal, and we've made rate adjustments pretty well everywhere. The electric fund that that bill went on in March, so we've starting to see that, that fund return to somehow. Uh it's gonna be slow and steady, but as summer goes up, you'll see kind of a little bit better performance there. Uh comprehensive fee schedule sitting on my desk. We've been going back and forth on a few things there. Should have that for you next meeting. Sales tax fund, we've kind of talked about that. We've we've kind of renamed it. It's always been known as the Family Aquatic Center Fund, but we renamed it so local option sales tax fund because as that retires, we're still gonna keep it. We're just gonna keep it separated. Um it's got a lot more than just the family aquatic center tied to it. Um E B H mentioned them fixing the C I P stuff. Um so moving forward with those things, uh let's see here. Uh public safety, we've got moving on that. So the fire station committee met in March. Blake and Barney were both on that. And now W D M is the architecture firm we've been working with. They're putting actual kind of concept together right now, so it's in their hands. And then we'll get back together probably the first part of May, but I'm gonna have some more conversations. I'm waiting to see something back from them. Um we also put in money for the, our application for the base grant, uh round two of that. That was supposed to be announced at the end of March, still waiting to hear. So uh they haven't made anything out of that yet, but we'll see how that goes. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of the nutshell update for the strategic plan stuff. I would like to take a time sometime in the summer, probably after we finish the budget or maybe during that process to sit down and say, are these still the things we want to work on? What do we need to update? We've knocked off several things on the list, so um maybe time to do a little refresh. So.
I think so too.
Do I answer any questions you might have about any of the stuff in here?
I like the progress we're making. I know there's been a lot of hard work in the, in all of that from not, not only on your part, which I appreciate very much, your engagement with the H four C and being on that board is is very important, but I know it's taking a lot of time and effort. So, but it's a very worthy cause. Appreciate that, but I really appreciate our city crews and and all the work that they've done to uh get this community plaza going, you know. I was at a, the League of Kansas Municipalities Leadership Summit in Hayes this last weekend and also in conjunction with the Kansas Mayor's Association. And so I was out there hobnobbing with my fellow wizards and from around the state and and you know, it it it's for it, from cities from the size of Salina to to Hayes to cities of our size, you know, and smaller, talked to the mayor quite like the conversation with Mayor Stafford, Kansas, you know, which is less than a thousand population. So, you know, the challenges that we all face in rural Kansas, you know, are are similar in nature. Didn't even necessarily depend on size. So we've got to just keep moving forward and we can't move forward without some direction. And this has proven to me to be a very important way to guide ourselves along. And you know, to talk to a number of people that don't have a strategic plan, you know. And so, you know, I'm glad that we took the effort to to do it. I think the first time is always the hardest time. You know, updating and keeping it, keeping it alive is not as hard as getting it going in the first place. So we've done the hard work. But let's don't let it go to where it becomes irrelevant. So absolutely, we need to, we need to do that. So. Any questions regarding the Q one update? Hearing none, we'll move on to city administrators report. Again, very, very lengthy, busy, very busy.
Uh I'm not gonna go over the the deed transfer, but that we're, we're still moving forward on that um over at the Midnight Church. Um Ash Street Easter Fire is kind of giving you an update on that. So we did have a fire at three seventeen South Ash on Easter. Uh which is always an interesting time when you have a volunteer department, you're never quite sure who's gonna show up on Easter. Um but we had a great showing and it wasn't the usual suspects. And so it was good for uh some newer, newer people and different people to get to do a structured fire entry. That's a really you know, firefighters love doing structure fire stuff. Uh so it was exciting for them. They were got some good experience. And then we also had, um anytime there's a structured fire with our mutual aid agreements, we get Marion and Durham to. Uh so they were there and they got to do some entry stuff too. It was good. It was overall, overall, you you hate to have a fire, you hate to have a structured fire, but you know, it went about as well as it could have. And on Easter, we were happy with the turnout. So um it was good. Uh financial report, Daniel's got the financial for February in there and the May or March is being finalized. Hopefully we'll have that out uh here fairly shortly. And then we're gonna start going back to doing a dashboard after the first quarter. It doesn't make a ton of sense to do the dashboard the first quarter because there's not enough data or at least anything. Um but we'll start doing that. So you'll have a look at that and I'm kind of working on some new ways to improve and simplify that reporting. So it's easier to understand. So that's something happening. Uh safety star recognition. I wish Caleb would have stuck around, but I know he had, he would have ducked out on that. So Caleb Spencer was our first recipient of the Safety Star Recognition Program. Uh so Caleb was working and he, of course, works water and sewer and he was out at by the liquor store. Actually, they were doing some work out there. And he witnessed over at the F station, the unmanned fueling station over there, a semi truck was fueling up and caught on fire. Um and so he jumped into action there, grabbed the fire extinguisher off his truck uh and got over there and was able to put the fire out before the fire department even got there, you know. It'd have been, yeah, great, great thinking. Just, just did it. Um it's awesome situation. It could have been completely catastrophic and was able to do that. So. So it's a safety star, the, the person who gets to get to half day off and they get lunch for their department. Now, we also have the mission values and purpose uh recognition and that's, they're on staggered order. So we'll hopefully have one of those for May, I think, so.
Well, you know, I would just say that it's takes a special person to, you know, see a fire like that and recognize that it's right there by a fueling station and still grab his extinguisher and run to the fire. So. I mean, you know, it's, uh we're all very fortunate that 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 was the outcome, but uh, you know, it could have been something much different. So yeah. Pretty brave act.
Yep. Sure. Uh K P P bill, we got that for this month. Um I always try to kind of go back and compare to what it was like for last year. Um so last year, we, we had, we had a pretty you know, significant low, significantly lower consumption. I think that's due to the weather being warmer earlier. Uh but we also had the, the energy uh cost adjustment was negative this year instead of positive, which it was last year. So that was a twenty or eighteen thousand dollar difference this year.
So and I can tell you that we're having our board meeting Thursday and the board materials that came out, it will be favorable again.
Yeah. So that, uh, the expiration of that energy contract with Jeffries is really starting to bail off. Uh another cool thing with K P P, we're included with uh eleven other cities. They're putting together a solar grant. Um so there may be an opportunity to put in a solar. I guess it's a solar farm, a little over one, one and a half megawatts potentially for our city. Um that's very specifically under the threshold that requires Southwest Power Pool approval for generation, uh which is really important because that's like a multi-year. What are we on, like year four with the other?
Yeah, which the first, the first uh report back from S P P was positive.
Okay.
And so we're thinking that we will have final approval for our Walnut Energy Center project at the end of, uh at the beginning of two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. That's, that's improvement. Yeah, that's faster than I thought. So. Um for this solar project, we submitted some property over by the wastewater lagoon. Um that will never develop as any kind of industrial property. Uh and so there's about, there, there's quite a bit of property over there. It'd take about ten acres to do one point six megawatts. Um so you know, we'll, we'll see how it kind of goes. And um it's, it's part of a kind of a package deal and it's part of the uh stuff that came down from federal government and now is being kind of distributed. So cool project. Hopefully we get in there and we'll get selected to move forward to the grant proposal part and just kind of see how it works. So. Uh senior class projects updates, a lot going on with those. Um so we've been I would love to tell you that we were, we're just doing this year's projects. We're still tying up last year's too. So uh park, park shelters have been done. If you haven't seen those, they're, they're looking pretty good. Uh we still have one thing to fix over at the East Shelter. Uh we have to replace the electrical box in there until we had to order that. It's coming through. So the lights aren't working right now, but uh we will be.
About painting. What are we gonna do with?
Yeah, we are gonna have some painting and we gotta replace some wood too. So uh we're hoping to get some of the people who suggested this to come out and help us paint that, but we may have community volunteer, it might be a community.
Well, let's, whatever, whatever it turns out to be, let's make sure we get some photographs and get that, get that out there. Cause you know, I really, uh as, as next year comes along and we have a new government instructor, I really am desirous of keeping that program going.
Yeah, it is a cool bill. I hope, I hope they do too. I think that's, it's a lot of fun. Uh the disc golf, which is from the twenty-two seniors, um that's moving forwards. The rec commission is just kind of taking that one by the horns and they've got uh twelve of the eighteen T boxes poured for the disc golf course. So there's another six to do and they're kind of trying to schedule that for the next few weeks. Uh downtown mural, I just talked to that group Monday. Um and they are moving forward with the greetings from Hillsborough mural. We got some money from the community foundation to do part of that. And then the other half, I think it's gonna come from the um uh C P P. So that will be one of those things moving there. Artist is working on concepts right now. He's hoping to have it done by Arts and Crafts, but they also said it might be kind of cool if during Arts and Crafts Festival, they were, they were actually working on it and it was kind of a work in progress thing too. So that might be kind of fun. Um that was the goal. Uh Mr. Canole is retiring and he wanted to see it started before he retired. So uh we'll at least have it started, I think, for that date. Uh safety on Jefferson and Grand, we're gonna be doing some uh painting and crosswalks and stuff if we redo the maintenance stuff down here in in downtown. So we'll grab that when we're doing that um and and do some more safety stuff on there. Lights at Tabor, which is when we heard, uh waiting for the grant period to open on that. So we'll see how that goes. And we still haven't forgot about the North Pond. It's still on the radar. Uh we need to rent some equipment for that. And we've had people doing work over here at the spray spray park. So uh we're hoping to get to that this fall yet and to do those, those improvements that were suggested there. That again was from previous year. So uh we've got a lot going on with those. Trying to keep that slate full and get some of those knocked off the list. That is everything I had.
Good report. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move into our final public comment opportunity. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to council comments. Councilman By.
Uh I just want to thank the firefighters and the first responders from Easter Sunday. That was from what I understand chatting with uh Chief Steckity, that was a matter of minutes that they could have lost that house. So uh hats off to uh fire department for their hard work. That's all I got.
Very good.
Councilman McCarty.
Uh I had a question could have brought up earlier, but the, the golf house. If they, the golf association, are they gonna have priority to get the golf house? Like, do they have a tournament? And whether we have a conflict there or so?
Yeah, we don't rent on tournament days. We've got those blocked out. We've only got one rental right now.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah. Trying to manage that schedule too, because they do use it for when tournaments are on, they run them out of there.
So just a suggestion, when uh when, if, if and when you kind of get the, what renovations are gonna be done complete might be good for the council to go out and take a look at it during the field trip.
Little field trip, have a ribbon cutting kind of. Anytime, Barney.
I'm so excited to see all the concrete being poured out here. That was cool to watch. So what did you guys bring in boats construction to kind of help? That was pretty cool. Merlin and I were watching them kind of like get it to where it was. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, but it's, it's not intuitive for us to drain concrete in. We're always trying to drain it out. And so it's we had to bring in, yeah, I think they brought six or seven guys out.
Yeah.
Let's park it and help with that.
So it was cool. Yeah.
Um just a final comment for me. Uh you know, you heard Matt talk about the solar project, you know, that K P P's working on. But I see that in, in, hopefully when we update our strategic plan, one of the things that's really been uh been weighing on me is Hillsborough's ability to generate our own electricity and not on a daily basis. But when our power goes out on the coldest day of the year, you know, we are really and and you know, we live in Kansas, there's a lot of things that could happen that could take our power out for multiple days, not just, not just for three or four hours. And I think that at some point, you know, if, if we're, if we're following the, the oath that we took to protect the, the citizens of our community, you know, that's the one area that that's pretty, in my mind, a pretty big hole that we have because we have excellent electric infrastructure within the city limits. You know, we have excellent police, excellent fire. You know, we have, uh, we have a great street sewer, you know, all of our, all of our departments are are well-staffed and well-organized and well-run, but we can't control the power coming in. And so at some point, you know, whether that's a combination of solar and portable, some type of portable generators, uh you know, some kind of combination thereof, battery storage, like we put into Minneapolis, you know. Uh you know, some kinda combination thereof, battery storage, like we put into Minneapolis, you know, something along that line. You know, I don't know what that looks like yet, but I think that's from a, from a longer-term perspective, that's something that I would like to see us. Move in a direction to where we could keep the lights on if ever G stopped delivering power, so. You know, just something to put in the back of your minds for you to think about as we, as we go forward.
We we had, we, you know, you talk about generators. We had generators that looked like crank cars, and we had, you know, and uh, you can buy big generators, but we use them to see music. To nag, you know, and we had, and we ran electricity there, but it's just something to think about, it takes a lot of space, it probably costs a lot of money. I'm thinking it wouldn't be cheap, doesn't be feasible.
Well, you know, when you say, think about, think about cheap, the 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 piece of that that becomes uh, becomes uh. When they become really cheap is when the power gets shut off. Right, you know.
Especially when it's cold, like three days.
Or hot, or you know, whatever, you know. And uh we all have businesses we have to run, and if we don't have power to run them. You know, that's an ec- economic disaster for the city, and so I'm just thinking about it in that, in that perspective and. And as K P P members, you know, that's something again that we could potentially going forward, partner with K P P on. You know, the resources of that organization are much greater than any one of its individual members, and that's, that's the whole point of the organization. Is to uh, to operate for the benefit of all its members, and uh I think Hillsborough is probably the largest. Uh electricity uh user that doesn't generate any power in K P P, so.
You know, it's something that could be done uh without building a new power plant.
No, I'm not talking about building a new power plant, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the answer, but I think there are ways to go about it that that we could uh. That we could take care of ourselves and 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 for some period of time.
There are things you can do.
Right, so. Just throwing it out there. Okay, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned, thank you very much. Good meeting.